All right, good evening. Welcome Wakefield. Tonight we have a pre-town meeting. Financial picture. With us tonight is Steve Mayo, Dan Sherman, Doug Lyons, Frank Leon, and myself. I'm Jim Sullivan. I'm the chairman of the Finance Committee. This evening we'll go over some of the financial picture of the town to date and look as well into the forecast into the future. A number of folks will be doing parts of the PowerPoint. We look forward to your attentive viewing. Thank you.
I might add that if anybody is asking any questions, please put them in the chat function if you're at home. If you're in studio, just wave and come up to the microphone. But put them in the chat function and we will try to answer them as we go through it and they'll let us know. So, thank you for joining us. And I'll turn it over to Deanna, prognosticator.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So, I'd like to turn the third slide to show our receipts. Thank you. So, the receipts for the past. We're going to start with the past and what's been going on through 2021. So, in terms of our receipts, our tax levy continues to be the major source of all our revenue, roughly 80%. State aid picks up another about 10%. Then we have other local receipts and other income. But you'll see that our receipts have been increasing at a steady pace. We passed $100 million in 2021 and we're going to be pushing into the $108 million for 2022 and 2023. Following page gives you a breakdown of the receipts and historic by percentage. And you'll see that the tax levy used to be in the 65% to 70% range. It's been increasing steadily since then to roughly 80% today. And you can see the other sources, in particular state aid has dropped. At one time, state aid was 20% of our total receipts back in 2001, 2002. But then the dot-com bust occurred and then we had the 2008 financial crisis knocked us down some more. And so, we got us down to around 10%. And we've been hanging around 10% ever since 2010 roughly. Local receipts have been very steady, roughly at 10% as well. Fell off a little bit because of COVID. But I think we'll see a rebound going forward. And the other receipts are just, I like to call just noise. Picks up a small gap.
Before we go on, Deanna, if we can talk a little bit about the state aid. This year, we did receive a nice bump in state aid, particularly in Chapter 70, which is education aid, an increase of close to $1 million. We were putting this budget together. I've been keep hearing over the years and we've been talking about we're going to get this, you know, the Student Opportunity Act is going to kick in. We're going to get some money in Chapter 70, which is the education account. And this year, it did come true.
And circuit breaker.
And circuit breaker. And it did come through really, really good. So, you know, last year, we had, you know, 6.8 million in state aid for education. This year, 7.8 million. So, that's a nice, that's a nice increase that we haven't seen in the last few years.
Right.
The other item, we talked about our local receipts. And you think about our local receipts, a big part of our local receipts are meals tax and hotel tax. And if you think about two industries that really got hammered, particularly hotel during the pandemic, you know, we were around $1 million a year for both of them and that trickled down to $600,000. That's coming back up. So, I think we'll probably hit the million this year. So, it's a little bit better than we had thought.
Good segue into the next slide. Local receipts. So, the bulk of our local receipts is motor vehicle excise taxes. You'll see that in the blue at the base of the bar graphs. And that's been pretty solid in terms of the majority of all our local receipts. And there's been an uptick in '21. And I think in '22 and '23, you're going to see additional uptick in the vehicle excise taxes. Other excise taxes actually are smaller. And then you get into, you know, other fees, rentals, and so forth. But if you look at the top of the graph, it's, we had, 2018 was a banner year. We exceeded $8 million in local receipts. '20 was a drop down to about 7.6. '21 is about 7.7. And I think we're on track for about 8 in '22. And I've got an increase for '23 of something like around 8.4 million is where I'm expecting that to go. So, everybody out there, keep buying those cars. It helps us out.
Absolutely.
Next slide. So, this graph is the state aid. And you can see that we finally got above what we used to receive way back in 2002, 2003, about 10.5 million. And for '21, we just moved above that to about, it's about 11, 11.1, 11.2, something in that neighborhood. And for '23, which another slide will be coming up, you'll see that we're expecting over a million-dollar increase over that figure for '22 and '23. So, we're going to see a nice uptick. We finally, you know, got above 2003. Next slide. So, then also I'll look a little bit at what we have for reserves. And our reserves are basically those three basic reserves that we keep. The first one here is our stabilization fund. This is our rainy day fund. And the rainy day fund, we depleted pretty drastically from roughly $5 million back in 1999. Down to 2007, we got down to $1 million and it represented only about 2% of our total budget. So, it's quite a drop and we've been slowly building it back up. Hasn't increased much. It's not going to increase in '22, but we hope in '23 to add another $100,000 into fall town meeting to the stabilization fund. And hopefully, we can get it up over $2 million. But what's important here is as a percentage of our total budget, it's at 3%. And at 3%, when we look at our policy, we're going to take that 3% plus our free cash. And our bogey is 10% thereabout. So, $3 million is a balance, 3% as a percentage. And that's our first reserve fund. The next reserve fund, if you will, is our free cash. This is basically what we have in our checking account. These are funds that we can spend at town meeting. We'll be using some of it for this town meeting. We've used it in the past for both spring and fall town meetings. But this is basically our checking account. And for many, many years, you can see that it was very low. As a percentage of the budget, it was hovering between 2% and 3%. And the balance was around $2 million. Way too low and not really where we want to be and not a good policy to keep at that low. But now, we're up around 8%. And if you combine the 8% of free cash and the 3% from the stabilization fund, we're at 11%, which is just above our policy goal that both the Finance Committee, Town Council have signed on to. Several years ago, we adopted that policy of maintaining at least a 10% reserve, if you will, in total for rainy day or other expenses, the unforeseen expenses and so forth. So, it's a nice balance. We're going to try to keep it up there. We don't want to get too big, but we also don't want to have it shrink. And the next slide is our debt service fund. So, this fund is what we've been using to, for capital projects. The schools, senior center, the library was in this. A lot of our projects, the recreation bond was in this. And basically, it's a way to maintain a nice balance and even out the fluctuations of paying on our bonds. It has a smoothing technique, if you will. We have a constant amount of money going in, but we have a not constant, volatile amount of money coming out. And this debt service fund handles that. We've actually increased that to roughly $400,000 in a long-term basis. It's going to be increasing going forward until, well, let's see what happens with the high school.
Right. I'm sure we'll find more projects.
Yeah, we'll find, we'll find sources, uses for this debt service fund. But there is $400,000 in that and you can treat that as a reserve as well. So, it actually pushes us above the 11% when you throw, throw this in. Next slide, capital. So, one of the things we look at is to make sure that we are spending enough money on our capital projects. We need to maintain our buildings, roofs, all the equipment, everything that has to do with capital. You need to be able to budget. You need to budget it well. Because the last thing we want to do is have a leaky roof that gets ignored for a number of years and then it turns into a huge problem rather than a small one. And Frank's going to talk about our capital budgets for '23 here in a few minutes. But you can see that there's a big dip here in '21. If you recall, in the 20-town meeting, we, we cut the capital from $2 million down to $1 million because we just didn't know what COVID was going to do. It was a big unknown. We didn't know what kind of expenses we're going to have. We didn't know what the state was going to do. Our local receipts could have really tanked. So, rather than touch the operating budgets, we decided to do something with capital. And we still need to, you know, move that back up and recover that million at some point. And hopefully sooner rather than later. Well, you know, we need to spend a little bit more. But you'll see the big drop both in the, the capital budget line item as well as when you add the capital plus the bond payments. That million dollars, you see, is quite a drop. So, we need to get our capital budget back up to around 3% of the total budget. And that's where we're going to be with this town meeting if, if the town meeting does approve. I'm sure Frank will be very persuasive.
Yes.
Okay, next slide. We talk a little bit about large budgets. And by large budgets, this sort of looks at, you know, those items that dominate a bit in terms of our overall expenditures. And you'll see that there's, healthcare is the biggest one. And you'll see a sharp drop in 2012 to 2013. When we went to the GIC, we saved $2.5 million roughly.
Probably more than 3.
More than $3 million we saved when we moved from MIA to the GIC. But then, we didn't take all that savings and put it into our budgets. What we did was to take some of that savings and started funding our OPEB, which is our other post-employment benefits, basically retiree healthcare. So, we now have a balance of over $20 million, I think, in the OPEB fund. Made a significant dent in that unfunded liability. And it's one of the reasons that our rating agency has moved us into AAA status is because they looked at what had happened with the establishment of the OPEB trust fund and the amount of money we're putting in. So, that was a big change. Really helped us out. And sometimes I think of that OPEB fund as another reserve, another $20 million reserve. So, that was really nice. Retirement has gotten quite a bit more expensive and has moved up.
I think Jim wanted to jump in.
Yeah. I was just going to say that there was such a prudent decision to make to fund the OPEB. There's so many communities that are, that are really, you know, working hard to get back, ought to be able to fund it. And what was decisions that were made long ago have really been paying benefits for the community, which is great.
And, you know, Dan alluded to our bond rating. And what that means is that when we go out to borrow for these projects, we go out to borrow for the Galvin Middle School. We go to borrow to do the turf fields. We go to borrow to do roads. We actually go out to Wall Street. We go to New York and they, they come in and they rate us. They say, how financially solvent is the town? And they say, well, when we tell them, yes, we've got a reserve policy to have 10% in reserves. Oh, geez, we like that. Check. We're funding our retirement. Retirement, we're, we're putting money away for that. We like that. Oh, what about OPEB? You're not doing anything for OPEB. No, actually, we are. And they say, what do you mean? No, we're doing, we've been doing that since 2012. Oh, so what that means, so those are a lot of great things to say. We pat ourselves on the back, right? Because we're great financiers. But what does it mean for the taxpayer? It means when we go out to borrow for those capital projects, we borrow at a lower percentage rate. So, some of these, these, these bonds, we've got in at 1% and 2% that we've been paying on them. Love to get that today. You still have to, you know, play with the market. But it's made a big difference and we can do more and spend, you know, less money. So, that's really what it means to us as taxpayers is that we pay less for, you know, putting the turf fields behind the high school. We pay less for playgrounds. We pay less for all of those things. So, it's, it's really worked out well. And the only problem is every time we go out to borrow again, I get nervous because we have no place to go but town. We'll see what happens.
But, I mean, it has saved us probably millions of dollars in interest charges.
Absolutely.
Which we can then, you know, claw back into our budgets and other projects and other capital projects. So, yeah. And I do work for a lot of other communities. And we are ahead of the game in terms of our peers on the funding of our post-retirement medical costs for our employees, retirees. We are, we're definitely a step ahead, one of the top. Certainly, the only, the only one I think that might be better off in terms of funded status might be Wellesley, but they did a prop 2.5 override to fund their OPEB obligation. So, they got, it's a different animal. And I think the final note here is on the Northeast Regional. That one's been creeping up and it's going to take a big leap because of the, the VoC just up the hill here. That has approved in terms of a new building, new facilities. And we're going to see a substantial increase in our portion of their cost, starting in '25 or '26, I think, in that neighborhood. We're going to start seeing some additional costs there. So, I expect that red line at the bottom to take a bit of a leap. Hasn't been too bad. You can see in terms of a 10-year average, it's only been 2.7%, but that's, that's going to, that's going to change pretty soon. Oh, I should make one other note on retirement. In 2021 and '20, we had two outstanding years on the retirement side in terms of the trust fund and the returns on that trust fund, over 17% in one year and I think like 18% or 19% on the other. The state now is working on our new valuation. And I expect that the rate of increase on retirement is going to drop a bit from the 6.5% you see on that slide. All right, next slide, please. So, on personal services budget, this is basically essentially salaries for all the various departments. And what I'd like to look at is a five-year smoothing, if you will, five-year average. Try to avoid some of the fluctuations. So, in terms of payments, this includes both raises, step increases, promotions, and additional people. So, it's all salary for all people of the various departments. And you can see how much they've increased over time. Schools and fire at the top at 5.4. Police DPW not too far behind. Human services had a significant increase because of the number of people. Did we add somebody in '22?
In '22, yeah.
Yeah. So, there's a bit of a jump. And as Steve likes to tout, general government's the lowest at 3.1. So, that's what we've had to pass for personal services. And the next slide shows a total budget for those same departments. Again, the fires and DPW seem to be at the top of the list. Schools at 4.6, a little lower. And once again, general government at 3.7, library 3% and human services at 3.4. So, those are, those departments have not increased as much as the others over the last five years.
And I think it's important to note that, you know, when these budgets increase, they are because services increased.
Yeah.
You know, and in each, in each area, you look at the, and I'm sure Doug can jump in on the, on the schools. But in fire, we added in a deputy chief, a fire prevention officer that we didn't have. Police, we added mission-specific police and SROs in the schools. Library, we added, and Sunday hours.
Sunday hours are in this.
In this, big thing. DPW, DPW unlimited amount of, you know, service calls on that. Actually, a number of employees is about the same as it was. It may be a little bit less, but there's just more, more technical expertise needed in them. And there's more cost of, you know, that's where our cost of oil, gas, materials goes.
Yeah, I was going to say, the materials and contractors is part of that, 6.4.
You know, there's a lot of services in here. And that's why, because the community has wanted those services and that's why they go.
Yep. Next slide. So, that's our history. So, let's move to today and what we're going to be talking about in a town meeting here on the 16th. The, some of the priorities. And these are pretty similar that we've had in the past on this presentation. Buildings, of course. We got to spend the money, capital, and keep our buildings up. Education, and Doug Lyons is going to talk a bit about the, the school budget for '23. We're giving them a 5% increase for the coming year. Energy efficiency is new this year. Why don't you talk a little bit about that, Steve?
Yeah, well, you know, you know, we live in a, in a, you know, in a global world and we're part of a global community. And we are looking to become more energy efficient in, in everything we do, particularly, you know, for a lot of reasons. A, to save money in the long run. And, but B, to be better for the planet. So, I know both the town council and the school committee have received presentations on becoming, I guess, what's called a green community, which we're looking to reduce our energy footprint by 20% over the next five years.
Yep.
And we can apply for grants for that, but it is going to take some of that capital money. And we think about, you know, we're redoing the public safety building right now, putting some of those energy improvements in there, doing work on the town hall that Frank and the capital planning committee have done. You know, even things like insulation, making sure we do that right, windows, again, while we're doing it to keep our energy costs down. So, that's something that'll be a focus, I think, forever now. And it's really something that's at the forefront.
Yeah. We have significant funds going into fields and playgrounds again. Public health, of course, has been a real big nut for the last couple of years. And you're going to see when we get to the, the health department budget, there's a significant increase there. We got a lot of work to do in terms of the public health area and we'll be adding some staff and moving in that area. Our infrastructure, we keep, you know, trying to get improvements there. We got, you know, the road bond is going to help with that. But again, very important. And certainly, last but not least, public safety. We got to make sure our fire and police departments are, you know, staffed appropriately, can cover what needs to be covered. I think the, the emergency services addition has been really helpful for the last couple of years.
I keep saying that was supposed to be a part-time position. It's more full-time than part-time.
Is he still full-time?
Well, he's, he's foolish.
He's foolish, okay. So, that, yeah. So, those are the things that we've sort of focused on. Next slide. So, as we look at setting up our budget for '23, the first thing, you know, we look at is our reserves. And we are over 10%, so we're comfortable there. We don't, it's not like we're going to have to tap into them and we don't really have to add to them. So, we're in a good spot on our reserves. We have enhanced services, for example, public health and increased department there because of COVID-19. So, you'll see that when we get to the Department of Health budget. We have a lot of capital to spend, what we need to spend. So, I went through the five-year plan from the DPW and I added up all the pieces that our tax levy supported. It added $93 million. I don't think we're going to make it in the next five years. A lot of stuff's going to get pushed off. Millions and millions is going to get pushed off. But when I think about what we need to spend on capital, our 2.1 million that we're going to propose this year is woefully deficient to addressing a 93 million. Now, I got to believe a lot of that stuff is, I wouldn't call it pie in the sky, but certainly things that, that are down the list in terms of priorities.
Not so much down the list in terms of priorities, but I think things that we really need to have a, have a regional approach on. Things like drainage, you know, the drainage going through town, through the Mill River. You know, we could do a lot of stuff here in Wakefield. And if it hits the Saugus line and stops, what does that do?
Right.
Nothing. Pan Boulevard, there's a lot of drainage area stuff in here. Road bond is going to help. There's a lot of roads in here, in there as well. That's going to help move that over. But, you know, we have a big enterprise that, you know, you know, I think we can remember 10, 15 years ago, capital, we were spending $200,000 on capital because of just the way that it was.
Right.
So, we, we've made up a lot. We have a lot more to do. So, there are some really good, really good projects in there. And I think the high school, the new high school coming online, that will whittle that number down too because there's a lot of high school stuff in here that will be in the new building, won't have to be in the capital, but.
Well, and the other thing that's going to whittle that number down is a lot of things like the road bond. We can do the roads and then we have a bond that we pay over 20 years.
Correct.
So, the 93 million doesn't represent what our payments are going to be for five years because a lot of those projects could be bonded.
Exactly.
And then there'll be, you know, push off for the, you know, 15 or 20 years beyond. So, it's not like we have to spend 93 million right up front.
And, and while we're doing the roads right now, the roads, everything's being looked at, water, sewer, gas, anything, any utility in the road. Because the worst thing you can do for a road and to shorten its life is to cut it for a new utility. So, we're really making sure, as much as you can, emergencies happen, that those are all taken care of ahead of time. So, that's part of the slowdown on getting them done. But think over the next few years, you're going to see a lot of roads being done and a lot of construction there. So, everybody be patient.
Green, Green Street.
Green Street, yes. People will be driving too fast pretty soon.
And the DPW has done such a great job, Steve, as you said, with the comprehensive look and rating, rating the streets.
Yes.
And rating sidewalks. So, you know, you get a great, a great base to work from, which is, which is going to pay dividends.
Exactly.
Yep. So, then we got hotels, the meals taxes. As you talked, it's just over $600,000 right now for '22. Our normal year is roughly a million. But we do expect that to rebound and we do expect that to move up. Snow and ice overdraft, good news. We got a zero. So, 20, this past winter was a relatively mild one in terms of what we spend on snow and ice. So, that'll help us out.
Although, that's an area we're looking at because, you know, we've, we've talked about that at the Finance Committee. We, we fund $850,000 a year for that. And with the cost of fuel going up and the outside contractors going up and you get these really big, kind of crazy storms now, it's, that's something we'll be looking at to increase over the next.
Well, this is the overdraft, sorry. But the, the main line item is 850.
We should, we should move that up.
Yeah, we should move that up. And finally, of course, COVID. We'll see what that's going to do to us. Next slide. So, in terms of our outstanding debt. So, we do have a number of bonds for prior projects, you know, public safety building, Greenwood Roof Recreation, Galvin Walton School, roads and drainage. And we have roughly $77 million of debt that we're paying off at this point. We have an unfunded liability for the retirement fund, which is roughly $53 million as of January 1. That's a significant drop from where it was a couple of years ago. And I expect it to drop some more in the coming years. The post-retirement medical, the OPEB unfunded liability. We do expect any day now to receive our 2021 numbers for the unfunded liability. But it was at $66 million. I think we'll come in probably around $60 million or thereabouts when we can finally get the report, but we'll see. So, it all adds up to roughly $196 million of debt that we are paying down on a regular basis. We haven't missed a payment.
No, we have not.
And hopefully, we will continue on that chart. So, looking at '23, we start with the revenues. So, our tax levy, property taxes, we're looking at a nice increase, if you will, of $5 million. And it includes a $3 million in new growth. We got a lot of stuff happening around Wakefield. Anybody who drives around here can see all the projects. We're getting a lot of increases for those projects and we expect more. Our assessor always comes in and lowballs a new figure and he beats it, of course.
He's like our town accountant. He lowballs.
Yes, he does.
They underpromise and overdeliver.
Yes, exactly. So, between the prop 2.5 and our new growth, we're looking at roughly a $5 million increase there. We talked a little bit. We talked a little bit about the new state aid, an increase of 1.2 million, which is significantly more than what we've had in the past. Chapter 70 and 90, 90 is getting an increase as well. Local receipts, I'm coming in at 8.4 million. Kevin is at 7.1, 7.0?
7.0, I believe, yeah.
7.0?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll see, we'll see, see who owes whom dinner.
Dinner, yes.
Yes. And, and if we come up short, we're just gonna use free cash because we have plenty of that to cover if local receipts don't come in as high as expected. Other revenue, the light department gives us $946,000 for '23 for the use of the, of the property and the value there. We're gonna have available funds. We grabbed $273,000 from that. Just like for the example, the library as a trust fund, we get perpetual care fund.
Sale of cemetery lots.
Cemetery lots. Other odds and ends is $273,000 and so we have total revenue of about 108 million is what we expect for '23. So, where are we gonna spend it? So, in terms of departments, general government is coming in at 2.7, public safety at 13.7, human resources at a million, public works at 7.6. The schools at 47.7, which represents about half of the total at the bottom there of 98.9. And I'm gonna turn the microphone over to our superintendent, Doug Lyons, to talk a little bit about the, the school budget.
Thank you so much, Dan. This is a very strong budget for us for FY '23. $47.7 million represents about a 5.65% increase. We're pleased at the support and the collaboration between school committee, our finance subcommittee that is a subcommittee of school committee, and, and the collaboration that we've done with FinCom as well as town council. So, you know, things coming out of COVID are changing for us and so priorities for us as in the FY '23 budget are direct instruction and intervention services as really, and also extending the school day and school year for services. We're looking very closely at kind of outdated technology and student management systems, but we're also looking and kind of keeping an eye on the challenges that we're gonna have moving into FY '23 in terms of things that, that are unknowns. We're, we're watching very closely kind of the, the world economy and supply chain issues that have stemmed from all that's going on in the world. That has very, very much affected our schools. It has affected our food service departments. It has also affected, and COVID has affected our human resources piece where there's a shortage in a number of positions that we're trying to fill. Some positions in special education are very, very hard to fill and we're trying to be creative and, and resourceful in how we're addressing those challenges. So, this budget also, kind of what we've done this year, like last, is we've taken about a half a percent or close to 1% and we are looking to collaborate with the town to fund some of the additional positions that we're looking for in this budget through grant funds, through COVID grant funds. So, these are one-year positions that will sunset at the end of this fiscal year. We think it's really a wise and smart way to use and collaborate with the town to use COVID-related grant funds, but it's also, we think, prudent because what it doesn't do is create the expectation that these positions can be ongoing year after year because as grants end, you're negotiating a cliff. And so, what several districts have done is they've brought on positions with these grant funds and then when the grant funds go away, they either need to cut positions or have a dramatic increase. And so, what we've done is tried to budget and collaborate and work in a way so that we don't have to do that. So, for example, the COVID-related positions that were funded last year through, through grant funding, the majority of those positions will sunset and just the very few positions that needed to continue will continue on a grant-related fund and we will analyze that at the end of, of this coming fiscal year to see if we need them. And then we will prioritize and, and think what we can move over to the regular day budget. But this priority really, again, excuse me, this budget really prioritizes direct instruction in the classroom and we're really pleased at the direction that we're going. If I could also kind of add to the green communities comment, our communication that, that Steve had mentioned. So, the green communities and cutting our kind of carbon footprint by about 20% or our energy usage by 20% is something that's a realistic goal, it's something we can do, but it also intersects with the work that Frank's doing in capital and it's like we're investing money to save money on the long term. And we're gonna get a return on the grant funds that we get through green communities and we, we anticipate that that's going to help us in, in regard to our capital expenditure in the coming years as well. So, a lot of the irons that we have in the fire are going to pay a dividend and play out over time. And, and one of the things that I appreciate in the, the recent planning that we've done with Christine Boufagna and, and Dan and FinCom is really taking a long view on the commitments that we're making, right? We're not trying to, to win a budget for one year. We're really trying to be thoughtful about how to create sustainable budgets year over year to have the greatest impact on our educational system, but that's a, that's a quick.
Thank you. After schools, we got library, increase 1.9 million, vocational schools at 2.2. Again, as I mentioned, that's gonna increase quickly over time because of the new vocational school that will start, probably hit us in 2025. Unclassified is other items, 2.6. And finally, benefits, retirement, post-retirement medical and other healthcare and so forth is coming in at 19.5 million and we're at 98.9 total.
Can I add there, Dan? We often get the question, why is your budget so large? And, and I, I often have to just kind of scale, provide some perspective here on, on the reason, right? We, we have close to 600 employees in seven bargaining units serving 3,500 students and families in seven buildings. So, in terms of scale, again, close to 600 employees, you know, when you look at other departments and you, and you look at our budget, I, I think it, if you consider it in that way, it, it kind of on scale, it might make more sense.
Oh, absolutely, and I might also add, I've looked at other cities and towns and this is very consistent. I mean, across, you know, the Commonwealth and across the nation, the school budget has always been, you know, the largest budget certainly and anywhere from 50% to 65% depending upon where, for example, if we move the school-related benefits to the school budget, that 50% that you have up there now would jump up to 65, something like that. So, it depends on, on a community, how do they, they put things like benefits? Like Medicare, for example, is, is on the unclassified, it's not in your budget.
Right.
So, when people say, well, you're at 50%, but we're at 65, something's wrong, it's not necessarily. It all depends on how things like benefits are categorized.
Right.
Who, who's paying for it in terms of which line item. But the, the 47.7 or roughly 50% of our budget for schools is not inconsistent with anybody else. Okay, we're all set there. Capital, 2.1, we're gonna have an increase there and the moment, we're gonna ask Frank to go through the details on that. Debt service, 2.7 million on our debt service. Automatically, 1 million goes into that, so 2.7 for debt service. We have an article for refuse, getting rid of our trash, 2.3 million for that. We have a zoning bylaw, which is actually $50,000, but I've decided this will round it to 100,000 for purposes of the slide.
That doesn't mean you can do that at town meeting.
I don't think I'm gonna do that at town meeting. It's gonna stay at $50,000. Our overlay account, and this one's been 600,000 for as long as I've been on finance committee and I don't think we've ever spent anywhere near $600,000.
No, we haven't, but every few years, we turn back some money from it to the towns.
Yes, we do.
So, that's almost like another reserve.
It really is, it really is. And then we get a bill from the state and county for the services that are provided to the town, things like MBTA, the county, we get the deeds and registration, other odds and ends that, that they charge us.
So, the major part of that, or a big part of that is the MBTA, which is, you know, 626,000 roughly for next fiscal year and that is for the privilege of having bus and train service. Okay, that's, that's no other way to put it. That's what it's, that's what it's for. You still have to pay when you take the bus or the train, but this is for the privilege of having that. So, that's that. The other big part of, of that 2.2 million is charter school sending tuition, which is about a million and a half. So, these are kids that go to charter schools, probably mainly in the Mystic Valley, would that be the highest, highest one?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, that is part of the state's formula that, you know, dollars follow the students from the community where they're coming from. So, those, those two are the big items that go out to the state there.
Okay, so that's roughly 10 million. The next slide for fiscal '23. You see, so our, our total increased expected revenue is roughly $7 million or 7%. We have increases in terms of personal services, 2.6, retirement's going up about half a million. Healthcare is going up about 700,000, Medicare 42, vocational schools 254, and state and county assessments up 272. We're gonna move capital up 100,000 from, from 2, 2 million to 2.1 for fiscal year '23. And then, looking at department budgets, the total increase is roughly $4 million or 5.4% and you can see how it breaks down between the, the major departments, schools, police, fire, DPW and library. So, that's what's going on at the department level. Next slide, capital. So, I'm gonna turn this slide over to, to Frank and he can talk about all the wonderful things you're gonna buy.
Thanks, Dan. Okay, I'll start by, you know, we did go up 100,000 this year, but over the last five years or actually seven years, we've stayed steady around the $2 million mark. Taking out the 2020 year, we had to cut it in half because of the COVID concerns. Couple highlights I'd like to highlight on that. In 2015, when we were at 2 million, we had about almost $700,000 in leases. Sorry, these aren't on the slide, I'm just reading off of my notes. So, over the years, to get a high dollar value item paid for, whether it's a, a dump truck for the DPW or a crane or something to that effect, $300,000, we can break it up into three or five years to have the payment lower and keep it in our budget, to keep our budget, budget down. So, that would go into the lease money. So, just to put it in perspective, this 2015, it was at 700,000, we're at 2 million. This year, we've managed to get it down to 200, 250,000 with a 2.1 million dollar capital budget, which, which is something we've been aiming for, for a while and to get it without having to buy something and, and lease it over a couple of years. Another highlight is in this year's budget, we do have a couple of big dollar items like a loader and a screen unit for the, for the DPW, which are a couple hundred thousand dollars each, average couple hundred thousand dollars each and we managed to get those full amounts into, into the budget without leasing anything this year and we're, we're pretty happy with that, we're pretty proud of that. But a couple of other high dollar value items that we have this year. We do have the, the new loader, the previous one that we've, that they've been using over the, over there at the town pit in the, in the town during the snow is about 10 years old, so that life's about, it's about up and it's about time for a new one of those two. The cruises for the police department, they always get their three, but this year they're gonna trade one of those in for a transport van that's been up for a while. There's been a lot of facility, there's gonna be a lot of facility work this year around the buildings. Town hall and those buildings around there, a lot of improvements, like Steve was talking about, to, you know, improve the insulation and the siding and the windows, hopefully to help with the green and help with the heat and electricity. There's a couple, a couple other items we've been trying to do over the years is I get a new playground for the schools each year because five years ago, they were all in a lot of disarray. I'm sure you've been getting a lot of complaints of those over the years and we started with the Woodville a couple of years ago. I'm sorry, we started with Greenwood a couple of years ago and then we went to the Woodville, but that got pushed off a year because of the COVID. So, that should be happening, that was approved last year and that should be happening this summer, that we'll be seeing that installed. And we, and this year, we went over to the Yule School, I believe.
Walton?
Walton School, yes. So, that'll be happening, we're gonna try to get both the, well, we, the DPW is gonna try to get both the Walton and.
Woodville.
The Woodville done this year. That would be great if they could do that, make everyone, make a lot of parents happy. And then, beyond that, we still have the Doyle School that needs some, needs some upgrades and the Dahlbia that needs some upgrades. So, if we can still do one of these a year, that would be great and keep it within this budget. We've also, you know, asked for a little increase each year because as you, as I've already stated, we've been around the $2 million mark for the past seven years without any increases. And I know in the 2000s, Steve had mentioned that we were in the couple hundred thousands and then by the time the 2010 came on, I think we hit a million dollars, if I remember the, the graph correctly. And then, for five years, we're in the million dollar range and then we, we kind of jumped it up real quick, which was great because there was a lot of items, you know, over the years, the vehicles for the DPW, the police department, the fire department, they needed to be replaced and they've been replaced. We've been doing pretty good with that over the years. But beyond that, the 2.1 million dollar market, again, we could do up a couple percent on that for next year, that would be great. And it's been, that, that amount's been pretty good to us, so.
I hope we can do more.
I know, you said a couple percent, I'm gonna write that down. I thought we were aspiring for five.
That would be fantastic. That is a lot. But it is 5% for this year.
It is 5% for this year, yeah.
All right, thank you, Frank. So, next slide, we get into the totals, right? So, our budget expenditures for '22, the current year is about 102 million dollars. We expect to go up to about 108.2 with, with the votes of town meeting, which is an increase of 6.4 million dollars or roughly 6.3%. Our total revenue is about 108,000, what we expect, or what I expect, not, not Mr. Gill expects.
And me, I'm in Kevin Gill's camp on that, so.
Yeah, okay. And then the difference, whatever happens to me, will be roughly 200,000 or roughly 1.3 million, something like that. But we'll see. We have plenty of free cash to cover. I think we're really good shape. This, to have something as small as a 200,000 hit to free cash, I think is one of the smallest we've had and certainly much, much better than what we thought we would have two years ago when COVID first hit in the spring of 2020. So, all in all, a pretty good budget, pretty balanced. We're addressing a lot of issues and feel pretty good about it. But we do have some challenges. It's not all, you know, rose petals here. We have the COVID-19 to continue to deal with that. We are dealing with our building and field maintenance, we have a lot to do going forward. As I mentioned, we have something like 93 million dollars worth of capital spending that we really need to do. We have a lot of roads, anybody drives around Wakefield knows that, you know, although we have that road bond, we have a lot of work to do on the roads. They're pretty, pretty rough. Stormwater control continues to be an issue, that's been up here for years and continued and will probably be continued for a number of years going in the future. We got public safety building, so the groundbreaking just occurred recently. Obviously, the high school is gonna be a big challenge for us and how we deal with the cost of that. And as I mentioned it before and I've mentioned here it again, we've got 93 million dollars of capital projects that need to be addressed over the coming years with either bonds or some kind of an approach to, to deal with them. So, we do have some challenges. Terms of opportunities, Eversource, one of the reasons we have this $3 million of new growth is because of the Eversource and the power line and so forth. We expect that to be at about a million five and the other million five is all the new buildings and new projects you see around town coming online and then we're gonna have at the head of the lake. I haven't budgeted anything for the head of the lake at this point, but I gotta believe that's gonna add to our revenue at some point in '26 maybe, '25?
I would say so, that's, that's up for approval, probably within the next couple of ZBA meetings, that'll be approved.
Right, and then.
Or is up for approval.
Up for approval.
Sounds like it'll be approved.
And then it's gonna be a couple of years for construction.
Exactly.
So, it'll come online for us '26 maybe?
I'd say '26, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so I haven't baked that into my forecast yet, but we got that. Then we got ARPA. Why don't you talk a little bit about our. Then we got ARPA, why don't you talk a little bit about ARPA, Steve?
So ARPA is the phase two, I guess, of the federal government response to the pandemic. So phase one was called CARES, and that was really used specifically for getting through the pandemic, you know, PPE for schools, ventilation for schools and public building, PPP for everybody, handling layoffs and things like that, which we didn't have. And that came through the federal government, through the state, and, you know, we went through a lot of that, testing and test kits and masks and things like that, we use it for. ARPA is more about the future and how do you build, build back everything and bring back the economy. So Wakefield received, or has, will receive, we've received about half of it now, about eight million dollars, and that needs to be spent over the next three years, needs to be spent. We've been kind of very prudent about how we're going to do this, you know, Superintendent Lyons made a great point, using ARPA funds for some positions that sunset or maybe sunset and reevaluate and using that and then weaning them into the budget. Kind of the same thing we've done with some of that on the town side as well, in the health department and things, and some other departments. In fact, some of our, we talked about the increase in the police budget this year, and part of that was a position that we had filled with some CARES money, the previous CARES money that we're going to keep, and we moved that into the budget. So that was about twenty thousand dollars that was added to the tax levy budget, so kind of weaning those things in. But we did go out to the community and say, what would the community want? There's, you know, you know, six, seven million dollars that we can use for, I think, statement projects, and a lot of interest came in about recreation and helping the downtown, facade improvements, helping, you know, families that need some help in other areas. So we will be prudently looking at that with the school department and the finance committee over the next three years, A, to make sure we spend it, because we don't want to give it back. But that we spend it correctly and spend it prudently.
And there's also limitations.
Well, well, there are limitations, the limitations are, if you're receiving less than ten million dollars, which we work, so we got eight, you can basically look at this as lost revenue. We lost potential revenue, and the federal government has kind of said, if it's ten million dollars, we're not going to, we're going to give you that, that mulligan, it's lost revenue. So that's great, so that's what, why would I do anything else? That's what we opted for, we don't have to worry about it. But you can't, you cannot spend it on reducing the tax rate, tax rate, you can't spend it on reserves, you can't spend it on, spend it on pre-existing debt, you can't
Retirement and OPEB.
Retirement and OPEB, you can't.
Can't do it there.
And you can't spend it on a legal settlement, so if you had sued for something, use it for that. But what we can spend it on is, and what I've been thinking about a lot of this, is matching grants. So there are lots of grants out there. The other part of this federal plan is there's, there's just tons of discretionary grants that we're applying for. In fact, we just got one the other day that is, I guess they're called fitness courts. It's a small grant, a small grant, fifty thousand dollars, and they're like these outdoor gyms where you can do lunging and pull-ups and things like that, they're very popular around the country. And it's probably going to be a hundred plus thousand to put this, put this in place, but you can, the, and interestingly enough, a grant through Blue Cross Blue Shield that we no longer use for health insurance, but we still got the grant, they'll give you fifty thousand towards it. So that's a great way to kind of stretch that, that grant and fifty thousand of ARPA into, you know, a whole complex. So I think those are the things we're looking at, certainly looking at more walkability, sidewalks, and matching some other grants. I know that in the school department, there's some other items that they can look at, grants as well, so that's what we're really going to try to do, and that's something the council will be looking at, and interestingly enough, does not get spent through town meeting.
Oh, yeah, okay, good.
But, and, so I think that using it to just, you know, all of it and counting on it forever to increase positions is not sustainable. We need to wean off of the positions we look at, but to use it for these capital projects, that's a standalone, that's great.
Yeah.
So that's what we'll be looking at, so, over the next few years.
Wonderful. And then we also, there's been a lot of noise about further increases in state aid, so that's still out there, hasn't been approved yet, so, so some good opportunities there for us. Following slide, just goes again, COVID nineteen, we can definitely say the impact in terms of state aid, less than what we expected, local receipts are better than what was expected. I mean, I had this, you know, I was Chicken Little, the sky is falling, two years ago.
I think we all were.
Yeah, it could really be, really be ugly, but it wasn't as ugly as we expected. And, and we just talked about ARPA and other aid grants and so forth, it covers that cost. So the following slide, so I was finished with this one, our forecast looking forward. So as I mentioned, we're about a hundred and eight million on expenditures and income, deficit roughly two hundred thousand dollars, give or take. But then looking forward in terms of where I see increases in costs and increases of income, you can see that it goes in the other direction big time. If we are able to keep our expenditures down to the roughly three and a half to four percent reduction, our income levels, I mean, it really looks like because of new growth, a big nut there, could be running as much as four, four and a half percent per year, which is much, much higher than it has been in the past. So the picture from now versus two years ago is totally changed. I think two years ago, I had negative numbers for the, all the way through to twenty twenty-eight. We were, and our free cash would have been down to a couple million dollars. So a lot of good things have happened for the town of Wakefield in terms of our financial picture, we are looking a whole lot better than we were two years ago. So that's what I have for regular presentation, and I'm curious if we received any questions from the audience out there on Zoom or the chat, is anybody monitoring that and can say anything?
I think they are in the control room, do we have any?
No, there are no questions on Zoom.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You did such a great job.
Yeah, every, here, there, the audience fell asleep.
They fell asleep, yeah.
They fell asleep. Oh, there's nothing but good news, all right, I'm going to go off and do something else. Entirely possible. But anyway, with that, I'm going to wrap up and turn it back over to Jim Sullivan, Finance Committee Chair, for some closing thoughts and comments.
Very good, Dan, thank you. Sorry I couldn't be with you in the studio today, but anybody else in the panel have any other comments they want to make before we sort of wrap things up? It was well done this evening. Thank you for attending, and, you know, we look at the process, the budget process, we work closely, you know, through the budgeting process with, with Steve, the department heads, school superintendent, school committee, town council, you know, it's a, it's a complete collaborative effort. We on the finance committee, I represent a group of, there's fifteen people in total, they, they take the time to look into the budgets, they ask questions about individual line items, trying to understand the budgets sort of from end to end, so we're the ones giving a good look over on behalf of the folks that are at town meeting and go to town meeting. Obviously, we encourage all to try to attend town meeting, which is May sixteenth this year, back to a, an evening, seven PM on a Monday at the Galvin School. And, you know, I believe this fiscal year, the FY twenty-three that we'll be presenting is a fiscally prudent, well-thought-out budget, as Doug Lyons described and the other department heads. We have money in capital. One of my long-term focuses is increasing capital spending, there's such a balance between the capital spending and the operating budget, and you need, you need both, both appropriately to make the town operate properly and continue to provide services to all those that take advantage of it within the community. Lastly, I'd like to thank the group that's here tonight, and look forward to seeing folks on Monday night, the sixteenth. Appreciate everybody's attention and thank you for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.